Good evening. The April 24th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Sufferton.
Here.
Councilmember Revell. Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Herakakis. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Winn.
We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. Before I get to those that are on the published agenda, I think it's really critical to acknowledge the fact that since we last had a council meeting, someone's life was taken in our community. It was now 12 days ago on a beautiful Wednesday evening, and a number of youths were gathered at Clark Street Beach. And at the end of an altercation, shots were fired. Two people were injured, and Jacuis Erby, who many people here knew, was killed. I think that it's very hard to put words to what this means across our whole community. And it's really critical that we take this event as a spur to take dramatic action. Dramatic action when it comes to support for our youth. Dramatic action when it comes to policies to take on the scourge of guns on our streets. Dramatic action to keep everyone in our community safe. I want to thank the many folks across our community, both city of Evanston personnel, particularly from our Youth and Young Adult Division, our Health and Human Services Department, and our Police Department, and in many partner agencies that have done good work in the aftermath of that tragedy. But please let us make sure that we react to this by stepping up in a way that will keep everyone in this community safe. I know that's a commitment shared by everyone on this dais and across this community, and it's a commitment that if we make good on it is really a fundamental representation of what public service is supposed to be all about. I have three proclamations to share. The first is, in a variety of ways, really apropos of what I just mentioned. This is a proclamation declaring April 30th Evanston is Family Strong Day. And it's a proclamation being made in honor of Dr. Marjorie Fujara. I don't know how many of you knew Dr. Fujara. She was someone who I had the privilege of working with when I was in the state legislature. She was one of the foremost advocates around gun safety in our community. She was a physician in Cook County who saw the consequences of gun violence in her day job, and then took that knowledge to be a very, very powerful advocate as well. I want to read the end of that proclamation out loud first. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2023, as Evanston is Family Strong Day. In honor of Dr. Marjorie Ruth Fujara, who is a supporter of strong families in Evanston and Cook County through her work as a physician and community member focusing on issues including gun violence, child physical and sexual abuse, mental health, and education policy. And I want to invite to join us in accepting this proclamation, Dr. Fujara's husband, Carl Kerman, as well as her children, who are in attendance this evening, and who know firsthand the remarkable work that she did that people throughout our community and beyond are benefiting from. So if you would all please approach and just accept our community's condolences and appreciation for Marjorie's remarkable work.
On behalf of my late wife, Marjorie, and her children here, I just want to thank the city for this great honor and for the opportunity for the work that she was so passionate about, which is, she was a child abuse pediatrician, one of the first board-certified child abuse pediatricians in the country, who perhaps saw more patients of both physical and sexual abuse in Cook County than many other physicians throughout the country. So seeing some of the worst stories brought to her door, she turned her passion to trying to do outreach in the communities that her patients lived in, to bring preventative services, to strengthen the parenting skills of some of those parents who may not have been ready to be parents but were. And this is what kept her going. And so to honor her in any way, certainly by continuing the work that she was passionate about, but by giving her this honor, it's also a tremendous blessing for all of us to be here to receive this. So thank you, Mayor Biss, and thank you, members of the city council, and we look forward to seeing you on Sunday.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight, and again, all of our condolences. The two other proclamations, the first is declaring April 28th, 2023 Arbor Day here in the city of Evanston. Clearly, our commitment to our trees is a multi-dimensional priority for this community, and this is a proclamation that reflects that value set. And secondly, declaring May 7th to May 13th, 2023 Public Service Recognition Week. I don't think working for city government in Evanston is always easy, but we have an extraordinary group of people who do it with dedication, who do it with commitment, who do it with knowledge, who are great teachers for me as I try to serve this community, and without whom life in this community would be nothing like what it is. So I think that's an important recognition for us to make once a year and for us to remember all year long. That concludes my announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Mendoza. I am pleased to announce we have a special guest who drove all the way from the city of Rockford today, Jennifer Crota from the Audubon Council of Illinois, who's here for a special announcement.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. As he mentioned, my name is Jennifer Crota, and I'm with the Audubon Council of Illinois, which represents nine national Audubon chapters throughout our state. The council launched the Bird City Illinois program beginning in 2022. If a community meets at least nine criteria of the program, it becomes an official Bird City Illinois. Bird City Illinois encourages all communities in Illinois to implement sound bird conservation practices by offering public recognition to those that succeed in enhancing the environment for birds and educating the public about the relationship between birds and people and how that contributes to a healthy community. Birds are very important to Illinois economically, aesthetically, ecologically, and scientifically. Illinois has a responsibility to keep bird populations robust and thriving. The grassland birds that call Illinois prairies home are amongst the fastest declining species of birds in the nation. Grassland-dependent bird species have lost 53% of their population over the past 50 years. These species have suffered due to conversion of agriculture, urban development, and habitat fragmentation. Thank you to the city of Evanston and for all the volunteers. Libby Hill is the one who invited me here tonight and has kind of driven this dedication for your community. The application was submitted and was well received and far exceeded the criteria required to meet the designation. I think it's important, when I mentioned earlier, that you must meet nine criteria. Just pay attention when I list some of the wonderful things that your community does, because, like I said, it far exceeds that. The Audubon Council would like to commend you on some of the specific criteria met, including your bird-friendly building ordinance, the amazing work at Canal Shores Golf Course, and being certified as an environmental sanctuary by Audubon International, your community's progress in climate and sustainability. So in this category, you met all but one of the criteria. So you've got your zero emissions strategy, you've got a bicycle-friendly community program, you have LED or LEED-certified municipal buildings, your community's solar program, and adopting a climate action resilience plan. I'm very envious, and will be taking this to the mayor in Rockford and pointing out all these great things that you do here and letting him know we need to keep up with you guys. Pardon me? I'd have to pull, I can send that information to Libby, but it was the last one on the application and that criteria. The criteria is all listed on the website, but it was just one. So it's very impressive. In total, you met seven criteria in Category 1, three criteria in Category 2, nine criteria in Category 3, five criteria in Category 4, and each of the criteria in Categories 5 and 6. So congratulations. It's very much an honor to be here to present you with this designation. I have a certificate, and typically we have two signs, but Libby is such a strong advocate that she wanted me to get here ASAP. So I only have one sign with me tonight, but I will be bringing another one to your community, so you can share that and hang that. And I also have this. I don't know who I should hand this off to. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, city council. You made the resolution, you wrote the resolution that made this possible. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Libby.
For initiating this.
Thank you. I have just a couple of thank-yous. I do want to thank Libby for helping shepherd us throughout the process. I also want to thank Councilmember Revell for her leadership on this issue, as well as the city council for passing the bird-friendly building design ordinance last September. I want to say thank you to all the contributors to the application, some of whom were here tonight, the Evanston North Shore Bird Club, and the various volunteers that manage our natural areas to help us get to this point. And I believe we are only the sixth municipality in the state to achieve this designation, and the first in Cook County. So thank you again, I appreciate it very much. My last announcement is, the mayor referenced a few minutes ago the tragic shooting that we had on April 12th. I just wanted to take a moment to thank city staff for their efforts that evening and the day since. I also want to thank our various partner organizations from neighboring communities, Cook County Sheriff and Evanston Hospital. City staff will continue to work hard to partner with the community on violence reduction. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Yes, I forwarded two email public comments, one from Wendy Pollack. I sent you a memo, and she wanted you to recognize and receive that. And then Mike Basoko, who wasn't able to stay for the meeting, he wanted to share that the city council is nowhere close to having achieved 38% of its 2050 climate action goals using renewable energy credits to support that narrative, provides the public with a false sense of our accomplishments. I hope the new Office of Sustainability team will be painfully honest with Evanston residents about the urgency of funding climate action. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public comment for the evening. Tonight, each speaker will be given three minutes for their public comment. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with Nathan Campbell, who will be followed by Lila Muboyai, who will be followed by Devon Cravens. I know that there are some people who maybe were shifting over to Zoom. Is that?
Yes, I'm over Zoom.
Go ahead. So just for purposes of direction of traffic, anybody who signed in on this in-person sign-in sheet, even if they're now on the Zoom, will go when I call their name. So go ahead, Mr. Campbell, you're up.
Okay. Hello, my name is Nathan Campbell. I'm a junior at ETHS High School, and I'm a student advocate. Gun violence is something that I've been wanting to solve for some time now. I lived on the South Side of Chicago, and there was always something happening in the area that my family and I were in. And it became such a common thing that when we saw an ambulance by our house, we weren't surprised. At the elementary school that I was at, I was outside playing, and someone started shooting right in front of my school. I had enough personal experiences with gun violence that I don't want to hear about it anymore. And at the recent event that happened at the beach is devastating, and it shouldn't happen again. And I'm wondering, what are you doing to make sure that another event like that won't happen again? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lila Muboyai, who will be followed by Devon Cravens, and then Olivia Olson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lila Muboyai, and I am a senior at Evanston Township High School. And due to recent acts of gun violence, I feel more wary of my environment and who I surround myself with, depending on where I go. In terms of what we should do to limit the amount of gun violence, I feel as though there should be services for at-risk youth, like free recreational activities or restorative justice if feasible. And that's all.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Devon Cravens, who will be followed by Olivia Olson, and then Nathan Schoenthall. Looks like Devon Cravens is not in the Zoom.
No, I was going to say that Devon isn't here. Sorry.
Devon's not here, okay. It looks like Olivia Olson is in the Zoom, though, so we'll go on to Olivia Olson, followed by Nathan Schoenthall, and then Jude Faran.
Hello, my name is Olivia Olson, and I'm a resident of the 7th Ward and a sophomore at ETHS. I'm here tonight speaking as a youth advocate and a member of the City of Evanston Youth Advisory Committee. And gun violence is something that now affects every aspect of American life, from what areas are deemed as safe to how we as students walk through the halls of our school. And I want to live in a community where I can feel safe outside at night, and in my classes, and at the beach. We need stricter gun laws here and nationally, and we need more post-high school support and community building in Evanston, because behind every name, behind every life lost, there is a grieving family and a community, and I feel our community has br- thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nathan Schoenthall, who will be followed by Jude Faran, and then Tiana Jackson. Nathan is not in the Zoom. Would you care to make?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Kimberly Holmes-Ross, 2nd Ward. I'm also the Director of Community Engagement at Evanston Cradle to Career. And we did have a lot of students here as a school night, and of course, adult agendas sometimes get in the way of our student voice, so we're going to try to figure that out, too. But they really wanted to speak tonight about gun violence and how it has affected them on a personal level and their peers. So Nathan wrote, "I am a resident of the 6th Ward and a member of YAC, Youth Advisory Committee. The problem of gun violence is nothing new. The recent events at Clark Street Beach have shown us that Evanston is not immune to this violence. Evanston youth and council members must come together to address this problem. We must come together and provide better community services for at-risk youth and strengthen connections between teens, youth, and the people who are supposed to represent them." Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jude Faran, who will be followed by Tiana Jackson, and then Abigail Stone. Are any of those three speakers here or in the Zoom? Oh, go. Right. I believe the other two speakers are not in the Zoom at this time, so why don't you go ahead and come up? And the next speaker subsequently will be Don Ziegler.
Greetings, Mayor and council members. I normally represent a different organization you all know, but I have been heavily blessed by Evanston Cradle to Careers, and I really want to speak just as a mother today, a mother who lived in the 5th Ward as well as the 8th Ward in Evanston, and I still currently serve as much as possible in the community in Evanston. I was actually at the beach the Saturday before this tragic event with my son, who has special needs. And I was on the lakefront on Wednesday when the tragic event occurred. I have a teenage son, 17 years old, and he was familiar with Jacuis and one of his brothers, who was also shot. And a lot of times, my son feels like I'm being very strict with him, even though we've lived in these suburbs. And I really did everything I could to hang on to living in the suburbs, because I grew up in Chicago. I've had to hit the floor because of gunshots in the night. One summer, I spent the whole summer sleeping on the floor with my son, because every day there was shooting nearby. And I thought, I've got to raise my babies in a safe place. And I came to Evanston. That was when my son was very little. And now he has known three people here, three youths here, that have been gunshot victims. And it's got to stop. I know that it's rampant, it's becoming normalized, and I'm concerned for our youth, how that is affecting them trauma-wise, and their thought patterns, and their ambitions. If some youth feel like they can't even see beyond the age of 18 because of the violence, I'm concerned about that. So we have to find solutions. Please listen to the youth, because maybe they know the best way to reach the youth, because sometimes I wonder if my son is hearing everything I'm saying. But when this tragedy occurred on Wednesday, and I was on the lakefront up to like 15 minutes before the shooting occurred, I don't know how that would have affected me, even just hearing the gunshots and then knowing later this affected a family that I know and a mother that I respect because of all the work I've seen her do in the community. It hit me on so many levels, and I still don't know how this affects my teenage son. But the last time I saw that mother was at the funeral of another youth that was shot on a Sunday afternoon. We have to stand and say not here and come up with some solutions. I know I don't know the answers at this moment. I was nearly speechless. But love is an action word, and if we love our youth and our community, we've got to find some action to put towards this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. The next speaker is Don Ziegler.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I am Don Ziegler, 4th Ward, resident and chair of the Evanston Health Advisory Council, which is made up of citizens and health professionals that advise our health department. I speak in opposition to the cannabis consumption lounge proposal. I've testified on this issue before Health and Human Services, Land Use Commission, Planning and Development, and use positions of the CDC, the Heart Association, Respiratory Health, psychiatric associations, our own health department, even the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and now we know even the cannabis industry, that states that allowing cannabis lounges in our community puts at risk public health and safety. So please vote no, and if you have any financial interest in this issue, definitely recuse yourself from voting. Thank you kindly.
This concludes the list of people who signed up in person to speak in person. So now, as always, we go to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Tina Payton, and followed by Eric Passit.
Good evening. My name is Tina Payton, and I live at 1122 Emerson Street, and my family has lived there for over 100 years. Harass. H is for harm. The city has continuously harmed the Payton family by harassing them through excessive city inspections, seven circuit court cases, two appellate court cases, and numerous administrative hearing cases over the past 40-plus years and currently. A is for attack. Even though the city has approximately 19,000 rental units, it seems to find a way to attack the Payton family with an inspection or violations every year. Retaliate. Because I speak at meetings regularly, the city retaliates against me and my family by making up property inspections, such as the one for 101 Dewey Avenue, which is in your packet that I just gave you. I spoke on the delinquent actions of the inspection department on the Condemn Building on the 700 block of Howard Street, which failed the tenants who you claim to be concerned about their well-being. Two weeks later, I received an inspection notice for my building at 101 Dewey Avenue, which I subsequently passed all six units with no violations. A is for assault. A is for assault. The city is intentionally creating reasonable apprehension of harm towards the Payton family with its unwarranted city inspections and/or violations. S is for suit. That's a lawsuit. Maybe it's time for the Payton family to file a lawsuit against the City of Evanston. You responded to the Black employees of the City of Evanston for unfair treatment only when they sought legal counsel. And S is for sanction. The city should be sanctioned by the court for its 40-plus years of harassment against the Payton family. The house that I own and live in, you are trying to do a city inspection, which is against your own law. Thank you and Black Lives Matter all the time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Passit. I don't see him any longer. Is Mr. Passit still here? All right. That concludes those who signed up to speak in person. We now move to those who signed up to speak online, beginning with Sachin Clark, who will be followed by Leslie McMillan, and then Jamie Collier. Of those three speakers, I believe we only see one in the Zoom, so the next speaker will be Jamie Collier.
Good evening, Council Members. It's nice to be able to address you once again. I was struck by one of the prior speakers asking you not to accept gun violence as normal. And I certainly feel as they do that it has become normalized in our society. Another thing which appears to me to become normalized is the way the Evanston treats its budget. And in the budget package, in the packet, there's an item to revise the budget, once again, which is kind of a normal thing and something that the council must do every year in order for the finance department to have a clean audit, that they ultimately improve any in-over spending more than the budgeted expenditures. I'd like to make three points. One is that there was a promise made to the council last year that in the future, any expenditure that was going to exceed the budget would have a budget adjustment made and presented to the council. There are a couple of them, namely the first one with expenditure in the Sustainability Fund, where this wasn't done. What is the council going to do about this lack of follow-through on promised behavior? The second is that the presentation presents tens of millions of dollars as budget savings. This is not a truthful presentation of savings. Savings means that you don't have to spend something that you previously thought you would. All those items that are listed for the various other funds other than the General Fund are merely postponed into the next year. This should be clear and not included in this as a savings. And lastly, what can we learn from this? In the budget, final budget, it appears that the General Fund has underspent by 1.2 million. But we look to three funds in this list, which did over-expend, namely the fleet.
15 seconds.
Legal, that the council should reduce, instead of the enumerated savings, should reduce the General Fund budget from last year by 1.2 million, and look to this year's budget to do the same thing and increase the funds going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. We move now to the next item on the agenda, which is Special Orders of Business. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item SPB-1?
I will move item SPB-1.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that we accept and place on file an update on the implementation of the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Councilmember Harris, I believe, is that correct? Seconds. Now we have from our spectacularly expanded sustainability team, a presentation, I believe, correct?
Good evening, Members of City Council, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe. I'm Cara Pratt, the Sustainability and Resilience Manager for our Sustainability and Resilience Division within the City Manager's Office. This evening, I'm presenting an update on the implementation of our Climate Action and Resilience Plan, as well as a presentation of our final 2023 action agenda. First on our list of accomplishments since the last time you saw me is that we have hired two Sustainability and Resilience Specialists that I will now ask to introduce themselves up here at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, City Council, everybody in the public. My name is Kirsten Drehobel. I'm a Sustainability and Resilience Specialist. I'm a recent graduate from the University of Arizona with specialties in urban sustainability and project management. I previously worked for the City of Indianapolis with the Parks Department, so I am very pleased to be back in city government and very much looking forward to working with you all, with the public, serving the City of Evanston, and furthering the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Thanks.
Hi, everybody. I am Benjamin Martin. I'm a recent IU graduate with dual masters in Public Affairs and Environmental Science, both of the concentration and energy. Most of my background experience involves electric utilities. I also have worked as a consultant for a variety of sustainability, government-related topics at a variety of government levels. I'm really excited to be working for the City of Evanston and continue to work with you all on reaching sustainability goals that we have. And feel free to reach out for anything else. So, thanks.
Thank you all so much. And now, onto our next accomplishment. Thanks to Ben and Kirsten's contributions, we did manage to submit a grant for the EPA Environmental Justice Government-to-Government Fund in support of our One Stop Shop for Affordable Housing Retrofits, and that was just in their very first week. In addition to that grant application, we also submitted in collaboration with Brian Zimmerman, the Solid Waste Coordinator in Public Works, another EPA grant for increased recycling education. And we have submitted a third grant in support of our fleet electrification, especially for the Police Department, which is from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, as well as ComEd. So please cross your fingers in hopes that we can get some of that grant funding to further our goals. Then the last accomplishment that I wanted to highlight is a partnership with Administrative Services, specifically the Facilities and Fleet Division, who have undertaken a process with our division to look at our municipal fleet in terms of rightsizing and electrification. And so from when we first started, we had one electric vehicle. Now we have 12. So we've purchased, as you all are aware, six Chevy Bolts and five Ford E-Transit vans in the past several months. So really have made a huge contribution and difference in terms of vehicle electrification. So thanks to my colleagues for that. So at this point, I do have a two-page document in your packets, which indicates exactly what's going on in terms of the 2023 action agenda. So please use that as a reference as I go through a couple slides. The format of this is a little bit different, because I wanted to highlight a different sort of structure. So I'll now go into legislation that you should be aware of that will be coming before you within the next year, different requests for proposals from the Purchasing Department associated with our CARP, plans and programs that are typically ongoing, and also some community outreach efforts. So first, in terms of legislation, there are broadly four legislative efforts to keep in mind over the next several months. The first you're all aware of is our effort to tax or ban single-use shopping bags that will be before Human Services next Monday. The next item is the Tree Preservation Ordinance, which, again, we've been discussing at this point for several months. We plan to have that before Planning and Development within the next couple weeks, I think within the month of May. In terms of building efficiency, we have begun some preliminary community outreach related to the phase-out of new natural gas connections. And then some associated efforts that will go into 2024 include consideration of adopting the Illinois Stretch Code, once it's available to us, and expanding our benchmarking efforts into building performance standards. So that's everything related to legislation to keep in mind for the next few months. In terms of requests for proposals, there are three main efforts to focus on. The first is our environmental equity investigation, as a reminder, that's included in the fiscal year 2023 budget to begin that process. The second is to install solar at the Robert Crown Community Center. That's, again, something we've talked about for several months now. And the third RFP to keep in mind is actually two separate projects. One is our Community Choice Aggregation. The other is Community Solar. Those contracts are up at the end of the year with MC Squared, so you'll have more information on that in the next few months. Moving on from RFPs, we have two slides on plans and programs to be aware of. The first is something we're all aware of, our ARPA-funded One Stop Shop for Affordable Housing Retrofits, as well as the earmark-funded Affordable Solar Program, which are both ongoing. Next, we have a comprehensive plan that we've started to talk about with community development that's taking the lead. We want to ensure that CARP is contemplated throughout the comprehensive plan process. Next, the Stormwater Master Plan, which is led by our Engineering Department, is in its final draft form, and we would begin to implement and take the next steps on that over the next few months. Our Community Engagement Policy, which, as a reminder, was recommended within the Environmental Justice Resolution of 2020, is also a project that's in its final stages and will go before the Environmental Justice Evanston Group, as well as Equity and Empowerment over the next few weeks. Sustain Evanston, or our Sustainable Business Incentive Program, has officially launched as of Earth Day, so just two days ago. That is a partnership with the Economic Development Division. And again, as a reminder, that was in our fiscal year 2023 budget for $250,000. Those are micro grants from $1,000 to $25,000 with mixed matching funding, depending on the project. So if you have a business and you're hearing this right now, please check out our website, sustainevanston.org, and check out more information on that. We're accepting rolling applications now. Next, we have the Parks and Green Space Strategic Plan, that is a Parks Department and Engineering effort that is ongoing. They're currently seeking community input on different aspects of that plan. As I mentioned before, we've been partnering with Facilities and Fleet to work on our municipal fleet rightsizing and electrification. That study is anticipated within this quarter, and the implementation phase would go through 2035. Again, with Brian Zimmerman, Solid Waste Coordinator, we have our Waste Circularity Strategy and Roadmap. A big part of this harkens back to what you heard from Planner Cade Sterling earlier in the evening about a deconstruction ordinance and thinking more about embodied carbon. Now, moving into community outreach, many of the efforts that I've already listed include a significant amount of community outreach, especially the legislative items that are a bit more controversial. But we did want to highlight a few community outreach projects that were not a part of the previous list. So first, we have Emergency Management. That's a partnership with the Fire Department Division Chief Cool on periodic education on preparedness and management. Next, we have our Environmental Justice GIS map. Again, that's a part of the Environmental Justice Resolution from 2020. Third, we have a partnership with the Urban Sustainability Directors Network to hire an Equity Diversity and Inclusion Summer Fellow. Applications are due tomorrow. You can find more information by giving that a Google or sending me an email. This is a partnership that recognizes the whiteness of the sustainability field and works to try to address that challenge and diversify the field. It pays $25 an hour, and it's full-time for 12 weeks. And then finally, we have our Public Facing Implementation Dashboard. This is a collaboration with our CARP Implementation Task Force, as well as community activists, to make sure that our Climate Action and Resilience Plan data, both qualitative and quantitative, lives on a website and is more interactive with members of the public. So we're working on that through the third quarter of this year. And that concludes the formal part of my presentation, but I would be really eager to hear any questions that you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Lots of exciting stuff to dig into there. We begin with Councilmember Reed.
I didn't think I would have been the first person. Well, one, I want to welcome, I didn't get to meet you, sir, before the meeting, but welcome, I did get to meet you, so welcome. While there have been folks who have been pushing to get your positions for years, I'm going to take a little bit of credit for pushing to get the funding for your positions through an increase in the will tax. And the whole councils, I think the whole council almost unanimously supported that and spread the funding. So really excited that you all are here. I want to highlight, as really for the whole team, I know Cara is not afraid to tell us what it is, like it is. But I just want to highlight Mike's, Mike Vasilko, who's public commenter, you'll likely hear him and see him many times when he comes up here. I want to highlight what he said, which is, "We are over-relying on renewable energy credits and other policies that aren't really moving the needle as much as we need to. And we need you all and Cara to continue the work of really pushing us to move forward and really bring us good data that can help us make informed decisions, like the bag tax that we'll be voting on pretty soon," which are small things. If we can't tackle the small things, I think it's hard to, to me, it feels hard to tackle the big things. And I want to highlight, you know, this was back-of-the-napkin math, if I remember correctly. But we had a conversation months and months ago about trying to put, again, back-of-the-napkin math, but put a number on what it would cost for the City of Evanston to actually get to, you know, to meet our CARP goals. And if I remember correctly, you know, our rough estimate, your rough estimate was, I think, over $70 million. Does that sound about right? Am I way off on that?
I believe what you're referencing is from the Municipal Zero Emissions Strategy. So that number comes from a consultant and is only for municipal operations.
Right. Yeah, that, I'm sorry, if I wasn't clear, I didn't mean the City of Evanston as a whole, I mean, the City of Evanston as an institution would have to spend that. And so that's on top of our $100 million unfunded infrastructure liability, our unfunded pension liability. So, and we have now an unfunded CARP liability, if you will. So I just want to highlight, if we really are going to do this, if it's not just going to be a piece of paper, and, you know, I'm glad you all have jobs, but if we're not just going to throw away whatever you all are making to have, you know, this group come up and make us feel good and give us presentations, we actually have to dig deep into the work of making the tough choices to raise the $70 million that we need just to change municipal operations by 2035, 20, yep. And that's on, that's nowhere near, including, you know, if we're going to, you know, help homeowners, you know, like our One Stop Shop and other initiatives that we need to engage in. This is a huge undertaking. Yes, it's going to take Yes, it's going to take federal dollars and state money and other money revenue, but it's, we're going to have to pony up some dollars as well. And we're going to have to make decisions that are going to make folks, business owners, small business owners uncomfortable, and they're going to have to change practices. And when we have a council, when we have a council that is unable to even, I'm going to be blunt here again, that's unable to even pass a plastic bag ban and tax, how the hell are we going to raise $70 million? How are we going to make the tough decisions to move this beyond where we are? And at some point, we either have to say that this is just an aspirational goal that, you know, we say we care about, where we don't, or we have to actually start making progress. And I appreciate this presentation, don't want to down this presentation, but I really want to ensure that, you know, if we're going to keep doing this, that we're actually going to take some action, we're going to make the tough decisions, we're going to risk being, not being elected again because we understand, we say that this is a crisis. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Suffertin, followed by Nusma.
Thank you. Kara, we talked about this out there, and so I just wanted to say it out here. Can you, as we figure out costs, like can we make sure that we keep in mind like a per-household cost here? I think it's probably a little more complicated than just taking 70 million and dividing it by 30,000 or so households, but I think that's an important part of this as we talk about raising fees, because we also talk about affordability. And I think to Councilmember Reed's point, you know, some businesses won't just, they won't change practices, they'll change locations, and that's an issue that we've got to address as well. So I think as we do this, anything worth doing is worth funding and worth tracking, and it's important that we keep in mind the per-household costs of any of these policies. So we had talked about that outside, and I just told you I'd ask about that. I don't know if you have any ideas for how best to do that, but I'm open to any of your thoughts.
Sure. Thank you. So the three of us did some, again, back-of-the-envelope math in between when we talked about it, just a couple, maybe an hour and a half ago.
Two committees ago.
Two committees ago. And so we did, we found some preliminary studies based mostly in 2019, and this would be a national average, that the household cost of deep decarbonization retrofits averages at $47,000 per household with a plus or minus of $36,000. So you can imagine that is a huge range of costs depending on the household and the situation. And then some other things that we wanted to make sure were understood is that the federal government, for the first time in a long time, has really significant rebates and tax incentives for everything from rewiring to appliances, renewed solar credits in terms of incentives. And we're actually having a program more about this on Saturday from 10 to 12 in the parasol room for anyone who wants more information about the household building decarbonization view. And there was another study we looked at that showed that just for HVAC electrification, the average is about, imagining that there's $15,000 upfront and thinking through the lifetime costs over 16 years, that you'd save $8,000 over that time. So we also wanted to project that, just because some of these costs are very steep from the household level, there are situations where you would save money over time. And I'm sure that I left out some things in terms of how tech becomes cheaper over time, incentives change over time. Also, something that was brought up is depending on how we finance a project and the interest rates at the time, those are all different factors. So did I leave anything out that I should add? Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Ben and Kirsten. I met you in the hallway on your first or second day, but I'm sure we'll end up spending a lot of time together over the next few years. I'm looking forward to that. I really do think we're making progress here. If you look at our number, and I understand that this is not the meeting for our annual inventory report, that will be coming up in six months. But we're making progress on that, on that goal of reaching zero carbon by 2050. And the work so far has been fairly easy, and it's going to get harder as we get more serious about this and the work, and it becomes more difficult to make these incremental changes. But I really think we're heading in the right direction with this action plan that kind of closes the gap between aspiration and step-by-step action. And I will point out that this is the second time we've done this. We did it for the first time last April. We came up with several dozen action plan, action items that were a result of a discussion between Kara and various staff departments at the city, the Environment Board, community stakeholders, council members, and we have before us tonight a plan that approves actions that are achievable, given our current budget, given our current personnel constraints, given our current bandwidth. I'd love to, you know, double the size of your apartment again to take even more action next year, but that's going to require us to come up with funding. And, you know, I will acknowledge Councilmember Reed's contribution to helping us, you know, come up with some sustainable sources of funding. I'll point out that two years ago, we did not have a climate action fund. In this year's budget, we have more than $800,000 in that fund. And so I'm looking forward to next year's budget, you know, finding more ways to put money in that fund, whether it's through local sources of revenue or additional grant, you know, opportunities or what have you. I also want to point out that Evanston is not an island. You know, we are not trying to go carbon-free, and we're not in isolation of everybody else in the country and everybody else in the region. So paying very close attention to what's going on at the state level, what's going on at the national level, taking advantage of programs that are available as they become available, helping as a community through our other elected representatives and those bodies of government push policy in the right direction. Evanston can be a leader. I expect us to be at the forefront, but we are not shouldering the burden alone. There is a lot of work that the federal government and that the state of Illinois has to do as well. So thank you for all the good work. I'm sure we're going to be doing a lot more of it.
Seeing no further discussion with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revell.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The update is accepted and placed on file. And I also just want to thank our sustainability team for the really, really important work and the clarity with which you remind us of the work ahead. You'll have a lot of partnership from up here in that work, so thank you.
And Chair, I just wanted to let you know that I am present and have been so since most of public comment, and I am an a as well.
Will the clerk please add Councilmember Burns to the roll and mark him as an a on the motion made relative to item SPB1? Would someone care to make a motion on item SPB2?
I will move, I thought the councilmember Suffertin, I think this was his, but I will move item SPB2, pedestrian crosswalk treatment recommendations.
Is there a second? Councilmember Reed moves that we accept and place on file stack recommendations regarding pedestrian crosswalk treatments. Councilmember Revell, seconds. I believe we have Mr. Cano to give a update.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stone. My name is Edgar Cano. I'm the Public Works Agency Director. I want to take a couple of minutes here just to go over pedestrian crosswalk treatments. This is based on a referral made by Councilmember Suffertin back in 2022, so try not to take up too much of everyone's time. Just a little background, there currently are 67 signed and marked crossing locations throughout the city. These are locations where there are not any traffic signals or always stops. You're looking at the map, it actually explains the type of crosswalks, whether it's blinking LED, if it's an in-street sign, or if there are flags near parks. So currently, the City of Evanston is getting frequent requests for more, for more crosswalks. We're trying to do our best in order to fulfill these requests. We know we want to go to more pedestrian, bike-friendly Evanston, but we also want to be realistic with the request and make sure that we are resolving concerns rather than creating extra concern. So when we're reviewing these, we're going over multiple criteria. We want to make sure and take into account the proximity of pedestrian generators, for instance, parks, shopping centers, community buildings. Also want to take the proximity to designated schools and other crossings, traffic signals and always stops. We don't want to put a crosswalk, if there's a controlled crossing, say 10, 20 feet away. We take a look at existing traffic conditions, and we also look at physical site characteristics, such as visibility. Try not to put them around any curve, and we want to make sure there's adequate lighting at the location as well. We also take into account changes in grade, not putting any on hills, and also not installing any crosswalks in multi-lane roads like a four-lane road. So and stated underneath, this is very important, just because a crosswalk location is desirable does not make it safe. That's why it has to go through the vetting process. So currently, right now, most of the common complaints that we're receiving, number one is that drivers are not stopping or slowing down when they're coming up to crosswalks. And then drivers are saying that pedestrians stepping out into the street without giving drivers a chance to slow down and stop. So it's kind of like, you know, who's at fault here and one blaming the other. One of the things I want to point out, and I think is very important for public education, is that the state law does not require drivers to stop or yield if pedestrians have not started crossing the street. So a lot of times, I see pedestrians, see a car is coming, they just feel, you know what, I got a safety vest on, whatever the case is, I'm unstoppable, let me just keep on walking, and that's where mishaps happen. So I think it's important to promote that. So getting into our crosswalk types, we have four types of crosswalks. This was determined back in our 2012 Pedestrian Safety Evaluation Committee Report. The general, the first crosswalk is the general crosswalk. This is the most common throughout the city. This typically just has an advanced pedestrian crossing sign, crossing sign at the intersection, high-visibility markings denoting the crosswalk, and a state law stop here for pedestrians. This just gives a better view. I believe this is Dodge and Monroe. So as you can see here, you got your pavement markings, your at-intersection crossing, or excuse me, at-your-crosswalk sign, and your state law sign. And then a couple hundred feet back, you have the crosswalk ahead sign. So the second type that we install is the senior crossing. So this is basically a general crossing with a couple of items added. We have, oop, excuse me, we have the senior crossing signs to actually denote that it's a senior crossing. And in a lot of these locations, we put the in-street sign. We do feel and have data that the in-street sign does work. One of the things that we want to note is that it's a current cost of $300 per sign. So the initial cost isn't that expensive. However, on an annual basis, we spend about $7,000 replacing these signs. We currently only have 29 throughout the city, so we replace, say, about 23 a year, not necessarily throughout the city. Sometimes some get hit more, you know, often than others, we replace the same one about three or four times. A lot of damage does occur, not only from vehicular traffic, but also from city operations, snow plowing, things of that nature. Here's one of the senior crossings. This is located at Dodge and Crane. As you can see here, has everything depicted that was shown in the previous slide. Here's another one at Emerson and Dewey. So the third type that we have is, excuse me, a parks crossing. This is pretty much like the general's crossing that has these four items here, but at the parks crossing, we also install crossing flags. The cost for the crossing flags are $100 plus $5 per flag. We have noticed a lot of maintenance issues with these crossing flags. They seem to just walk away. A lot of times, you know, we get maintenance requests to come back and replace them, which isn't a big deal. A lot of times also, they're just hanging out on one side of the street, people don't bring them back. So it does take some staff time to go back out there and pretty much maintain them. So one of the things that we're looking into, you're going to see later on in our recommendations, is possibly getting rid of these flags. So you can see here, this is at Gross Point at Thayer near Lovelace Park, has everything here, and if you can see down at these posts here, we do have the flags. So this is another depiction near Lovelace at Crawford and Thayer. This is somewhat of an older picture. I do believe we have an in-street sign right there in the middle. All right. The fourth type that we have is a school crossing. So the school crossing, put a little bit more into it, a little bit more expensive. It has the four from the general, or excuse me, three of the general. We also have the in-street sign, and we also installed the LED blinker at these locations. So those blinkers currently cost about $10,000 per location. And here's an example of that on Main Street, I believe that's Florence, near Washington School. And another one here on Dodge, near Doll School. So one of the other items that we've started to do is install curb extensions, sidewalk curb extensions, pretty much shorten the crossing distance that the pedestrians have to cross. Another thing that it does is improve the line of sight. The cars are able to see the pedestrians now, and pedestrians aren't blocked by the vehicles in the parking lane, so it's a little bit safer, also works as a traffic calming measure. Since the road narrows, vehicles just instinctively, or excuse me, operators just instinctively start to slow down a little bit. Some of the things associated negatives, I wouldn't call them necessarily negatives, but I guess some of the items that we need to work out with these is that from what you can see, oop, excuse me, from what you can see here, if not done completely right, we don't get that radius right, it is a little bit difficult for our street sweepers to get in there and make sure we get everything out, and also a little bit of a concern for our snow plows. But luckily, we've been working with our engineering teams and figuring that out to make sure it works both for the community and for maintenance operations as well. The costs for these are, you know, plus or minus $40,000, so they are a little bit more on the expensive side. Two things that we're going to pilot pretty soon. Number one is a raised crosswalk. We have this going in at Main Street, just west of Custer. So it's just an elevated crossing right here. We have high hopes for it, can't wait to see what it actually does. Now, there are some cons associated with these as well, could create some loud noises from just the trucks changing in that elevation. I've seen in other communities where there has been a little bit of snow and ice buildup right as you get to it at that elevation change, and deterioration of that lip as the elevation changes as well. But we're excited to implement it and see what it does for the City of Evanston, how it works for us. The second thing we're trying is stamped asphalt. This is going to be happening in our Oakton project, a couple of locations. It's not going to look exactly like this, but it's a pretty good rendering of potentially what it could look like. So we're going to have to take data after that and see what it does to improve, see if we can incorporate that in any future designs as well. So right now, we do have some recommendations. One of the things that we're looking to do is expand the use of in-street signs. As I previously stated, they do cost $300, and it's an annual, typically right now, annual maintenance fee of $7,000 to replace since they do get hit. Number two, we want to expand the use of crosswalk signs with blinking LED borders. We want this done through a petition process, because there are some negatives to this. We have had people claim that, you know, you're going to be polluting the neighborhood with just light, just that extra light. I know it's not a lot of light, but sometimes people just want to, you know, make mention of that. Another thing is you can't really put it in shady areas, since they are solar-powered, we need to make sure that they get direct sunlight in order to charge. So we're going to ask to do this through a petition process where we send out a petition in a one-block radius of where the installation is going to be. We're going to try to utilize curb extensions where appropriate, and then again, thinking of discontinuing the use of flags at crosswalks, trying to get some feedback from the community. I don't know if, they do feel a little bit safer having that there, but we feel that other things such as putting an in-street sign will work better and have a more of a desired effect. Number five, we want to provide, we're asking to provide additional funding for implementation. Number five, we want to provide, we're asking to provide additional funding for implementation and upgrade for crosswalks. Therefore, you know, we are asking for $300,000 in ARPA funds, one-time use, and then an additional $20,000 in Public Works Operations Budget for maintenance annually. That $20,000 will go to buying the blinking LED lights and also purchasing any increased in-street signs, as well as just pavement markings. One of the other things that we're going to do is just keep a better eye on our crosswalks to see if they need to be refreshed a little bit earlier. Currently, we do a five-year cycle for pavement markings, but we've noticed that a lot of busy intersections, especially at near schools, where there's buses or just the truck routes, those need to be refreshed a little bit earlier, so we're going to be looking into that as well. So that's all that I have right now. I take any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. We begin with Councilmember Reed, followed by Sufferton.
I just want to say thank you for the work. This is something I get a lot of emails about, and you know, and I appreciate all the work you do turn around, and this is like a pretty core municipal responsibility. So I appreciate you taking us seriously and looking at places throughout the city where we can improve safety.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes, I'm sharing my screen here. I don't know how we get to that, but point being is, really, I just want to say thank you as well. I have had a number of folks reach out in my ward, particularly around our schools with, you know, Dawes, I'm sorry, Dewey. Dawes, I'm sorry, I grew up near Dewey in the 5th Ward. You know, with concerns around pedestrian safety, particularly at Ridge and Oakton and throughout the ward. And so this is really helpful. I'm glad that you beat me to it, because when I first flipped my light on, it was about raised pedestrian crosswalks, and I've been seeing them popping up in nearby communities. And I stop and take pictures of weird stuff like this when I see it. So this is in the 49th Ward of Chicago. When I was recently in Mexico, this was a raised crosswalk. And it, and I know in Norway and other countries, raised crosswalks are extremely popular, and I can tell you, as a pedestrian walking in these areas, it really does feel nice to have the cars come up to your level rather than stepping down into what feels like a space for cars. This was near a bus station, so certainly there were large vehicles going over that, and it certainly adds some noise, particularly as buses are going over that. But, and then I was looking for some statistics, and I couldn't find anything but in a very short search. But I recall reading, you know, the efficacy of raised crosswalks, particularly in Norway, and how, certainly I know that raised medians in the middle of the road reduces traffic, pedestrian accidents significantly. And I'd imagine raised crosswalks does that as well. And I just want to put it on, you know, for your next project, I invite you to come to the 8th Ward and give us some raised crosswalks, particularly near our schools and Ridge, if that's even an eligible street for something like this. Maybe not as steep a gradient as that, maybe, oop, sorry, that's a curb. I take pictures of curbs. Maybe it's something a little closer to that, which is a much easier kind of crossing. But yeah, I just really want to say thank you and highlight that, and really excited to see what comes from those studies, and particularly even the, I'm sorry, what was the term for the asphalt, the dyed asphalt?
Yeah.
Stamped, I'm sorry, what is, can you describe what stamped asphalt is?
Yeah, so it's basically just asphalt that is going to be stamped into brick patterns and then colored.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting. What I've seen in other, some other countries is there's like, particularly for bike lanes and other, like a dyed asphalt that is a different color, and those seem to, again, I haven't seen data on it, but from what I've read about user experience, seems to make the user experience a lot better. And I can say that these raised crosswalks certainly do as a pedestrian. So thank you for the work, really looking at, see this move forward and make these kinds of investments in our city.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you. I too get a bunch of calls and emails from residents, I'm sure we all do. So what's the procedure now? I have a, I have a better understanding of what the options are, but I get a call, not every specific request can be accommodated, of course, and we want to deploy these, you know, strategically and rationally. So I get a call, what should I do with that? Should I forward it on to you, or do we need to take a more strategic approach and look at, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood or ward by ward where we're going to add some crosswalks?
Anything you get, you can forward on to me. I'll meet with the traffic engineer and the city engineer too, to make sure that we're able to evaluate it and see if it makes sense to put something there. We currently already have a list of some areas that we are looking into as well to make those. But yeah, just anything you have, I'd be more than glad to take that.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The recommendations are accepted and placed on file, and I want to join everyone's thanks to our team for the diligent work on what is absolutely a really core and fundamental municipal function. This brings us to the consent agenda for the evening. Listen carefully, I have a lot of, oh, thank you, I have a lot of sort of pre-announcements here. The following two items were amended in committee, and thus will come off the consent agenda so their amendments can be, so they can be, amendments can be stated and they can be considered in that form. Those items are A2 and A3. P2 was tabled, so will not be heard tonight. P4 was voted down, so will not be voted, not be considered tonight. And HS1 is a companion item of P4, which was voted down, so it also should not be considered tonight. So are there any items besides A2, A3, P2, P4, and HS1 that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
P3, please, Mr. Mayor.
A8 and FB1.
Seeing no further, I would entertain a motion.
I will move the consent agenda with those amendments.
Councilmember Newsma moves passage of the consent agenda except for items A2, A3, A8, P2, P3, P4, HS1, and FB1. Yes, that does leave some stuff. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda except for the eight items previously named is declared passed. This brings us to item A2. Councilmember Harris, do you want to articulate the amendment that was added to A2 before we, and then perhaps make a motion?
Yes. So staff is seeking city council approval for the ARPA allocation not to exceed $54,063.51 for the purchase and installation of furniture and lighting for the lagoon area.
And what was the amendment that was made in committee?
For $54,063.51. It was reduced from $61,000.
Understood. So it was reduced to what number, 54 what? That is a specific number. Would you care to make that motion, then?
I move that we pass A2 for $54,063.51 for the purchase of furniture at the lagoon.
Councilmember, or go ahead, say it again. Councilmember Harris moves approval of the previously just-named ARPA allocation for Arlington Lagoon patio furniture and lighting. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Not about this issue. So I'm sorry, why was this pulled up? I mean, if we meant something in committee, why do we have to pull it off the consent?
We don't. It's a transparency decision, not a procedural requirement.
Okay, no, no problem. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the allocation is approved. Now, A, this brings us to item A3, where again, there was an amendment that was made in committee. Councilmember Harris?
Yes, so the amendment that was made was that we get rid of, no fees, that there's no fees to this structure or permits.
Thank you. Would you care to make a motion?
I move for the approval of using public space for outdoor dining with the need of permits with no fees.
For 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of A3 with amendment that eliminates the fee. Councilmember Reed, I believe? Was it?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Reed, oh, sorry, for 2023. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll? Oop, sorry. Councilmember Reed, just under the wire.
I just want to make clear, since we're doing this for transparency, that free permit will also include free jersey barriers for this year as well.
Thank you. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the item is passed as was, as amended in committee. This brings us to item A8. Councilmember Harris, would you care to make a motion?
I approve, I move for the approval of change order number three to the agreement with Smith Group for the Evanston Shoreline Repairs RFQ 2145.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of change order number three to the agreement with Smith Group Incorporated for the Evanston Shoreline Repairs. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
So I'm just, I'm trying to understand, most of this change order is for one of those two plans for the ADA at the Dog Beach? Or am I?
Yes, members of the council, my name is Laura Biggs, I'm the city engineer. So yes, the change order is pretty much entirely to complete the design engineering services and provide construction engineering services for ADA access of the Dog Beach.
Okay, thank you. I would just ask, I think most of the, from the feedback I got from Dog Beach, as well as from disabled interest, did, residents, I don't think they felt like either of those plans were really quite right. I would love it if we could hold this until you met at the beach with both, with residents who are disabled, who access the beach, as well as with some of the regular Dog Beach owners. I just, I think there was a lot of concern about both of those plans. Would that be a possibility to hold this until that meeting took place? I think people, I think residents who are so excited about the beach and everything else would feel much better.
So I guess I, I guess I'm not entirely sure what's being asked, because this is, this is a very vague request, I guess.
Well, let me, so are you asking a procedural question of me as the chair?
Sure.
Okay. So you could move to hold this, which would mean it would come back on the agenda in two weeks. You could move to table it to a date certain, which might give more time. I don't know if there's support for that, but those are, those are procedurally in order motions that you could make at this time.
Okay, then I think just in order to allow time, one, I guess, one month, two weeks might be short to plan that, but I just think it's so important for the success of the beach, and, I mean, those were really large elaborate plans, and I think there were some feelings, and folks did research to find other ways that wouldn't, that might be more appropriate for the Dog Beach for ADA accessibility. So I would like to table it for, I guess, one month? Is that?
So you might want to table it for four weeks until?
Four, four weeks.
Two weeks from now.
To allow for that community meeting at the beach.
So Councilmember Kelly moves this item be tabled to the second meeting in May, which I want to say is May 22nd, but don't quote me on that. Ooh, I guess you can quote me on that. Great. Is there a second to that motion? The motion fails for lack of a second. Is there, do you?
I guess I would just, I mean, it's a large chunk of money. These are very elaborate accessibility ADA. There are ways to do this less expensive for probably the beach that has the least attendance in terms of ADA that we're, I just think we're really, I wish somebody would second this, so that we have the input from community members who access the beach, including disabled. There are disabled group that go down and enjoy the Dog Beach for their input, as well as architects who are involved. I just, I don't think we're proceeding in the best way with the Dog Beach with community input. I think we should be all about community input. This has been such a huge community space. I just really ask that we, because this is a big project that you're proposing in terms of the ADA accessibility. Thank you.
Seeing no further.
No, I'm just, anyway, could I get somebody, some lakefront person to, or anybody that uses the Dog Beach? I think anybody who's been down there would recognize that it's really become such an incredible community space, and I think their input would help make this a far better
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and the change order is approved. This brings us now to item P3.
I want to move it.
All right, so.
I'm eager.
Right, I mean, ordinarily, I would ask the chair to move it, but I think the chair may not be in support, so go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move item P3, ordinance 41-023, amendment title four, building regulations and the city code, striking chapter 14 design and project review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Sufferton moves passage of ordinance 41-023. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. There any discussion? Councilmember Sufferton.
I'd also like to move that we consider this for introduction and action.
Councilmember Sufferton moves that the rules be suspended, so this could be considered for introduction and action simultaneously. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Is this a non-debatable motion? I don't, well, it's, I don't know.
I think it's debatable.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the rules are suspended. I think Councilmember Sufferton still has the floor, and Councilmember Reed will be next.
I encourage a high vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
I support this too. I just want to flag, I just, I just want to institutionalize the memory that we unanimously voted to move something for introduction and action without it being listed on the agenda. I just want to highlight that, because this has happened before, and there have been many excuses for not being able to do that. I support this. I think that's an okay practice, doesn't violate OMA, but I've seen the exact opposite happen when folks don't want something to happen, and they, so I'll stick to the issue here and support this, but I have to call that out.
Want to make sure I understand your initial motion, Councilmember Sufferton. Just want to make sure I understand your initial motion, Councilmember Saffredin. Was the initial motion passage of ordinance 41-023 for introduction and action?
Yes.
Okay. So, that is the motion on the floor. This will then be final action on this item. With the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 41-023 is passed both for introduction and for action. This brings us now to item FB1. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item FB1?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move item FB1, ordinance 40-023, authorizing the city of Evanston city manager to reduce the total fiscal year 2022 budget by $34,438,897 to a new total of $325,994,623.
Councilmember Newsma moves passage of ordinance 40-023. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
So, this is an altogether new way of, we have a big surplus budget, and then we have overspending. And in the past couple of years, we've amended the budget right before the audit to adjust it for over expenditures of funds, and I think that's a much more transparent way to do this, and then acknowledge our surplus. So, now, I think, you know, so I would much rather see us proceed as we've done in the past, where we amend the budget, where staff has exceeded fund balance, approved fund expenditures, amend that, and acknowledge our surplus. I think this way, by reducing our budget, we've never before done this in Evanston's history, so I don't think this is a, doesn't feel very transparent to the public. I think, I think we should proceed as we've done in the past years. I also have a question regarding the opening, where it says here that the amount is, it's different, the amount in the parentheses, let's see, it says, one moment, there's some conflicting information on this, and I'll find it in just a moment. But, okay, but first, yeah, that, so why the decision this year to reduce last year's budget rather than increase our budget based on overspending? If you could also state the total amount of over expenditures from last year?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, you are right that we have never reduced the budget for the funds which haven't spent to their maximum, but if you see the amount in each of the four categories, those were substantial, particularly in water fund, where we spent 15 million less because of one capital project, obviously it's carried forward to the current year. And the other big one was the ARPA fund. I reached out to our corporation council, and he said, yeah, there is nothing illegal. Obviously, we haven't done that. We reached out to our second, the auditors, and they say, yep, I don't know that whether if you do it, it would be any legal. Even I heard from Schaumburg that, yeah, they reduce where they see the substantial reduction, and they would do the reduction of the budget. Talking about, so yes, to answer your question, we haven't done in the history, but considering the sizable amount, we were like four funds, resulting in almost like a $38 million reduction. And so, we just want to be like more transparent and give the public and the residents a clear understanding that how the funds spent against their budgeted amount. Some of the funds which have spent, I mean, obviously the description is self-evident there, like SSA funds in there, where we got more revenue and we had to share more, so obviously expenses went over the budget. That was, besides that, you would see the explanation for subparly funds, where the city council approved certain projects for that, and that's why it resulted in the expenses going above the budgeted level. But overall, yes, nothing kind of a significant, which would like cause alarm or kind of raise a flag here.
So, what is the, sorry, no, I'm looking at last year, where there was an overspending of 11.5 million, and so we increased the budget, we amended it to increase the previous year's budget the year before that. It was a $14.4 million exceedance of the approved budget. So, again, the budget was amended right before the audit to increase the previous year's budget. I just don't see any very serious variation from this year from those past two years, why we would do this. And you said that you thought the auditor thought it was, wasn't illegal?
Yes, 32. I just, because, yeah, sometimes they are aware of that. At the same time, I asked our corporation council, and both were kind of okay, that, yeah, there's nothing illegal. Obviously, we talked about the Evanston tradition, that we haven't done this thing in the past.
It's rarely done, from what I've understanding from surveying cities.
Yes, I would agree with them. I mean, in total, I first time started here in 2000, since then, I haven't seen that. But at the same time, after kind of talking to the auditors and the legal council, we thought that for the sake of transparency, considering the amount involved in that fund, almost $38 million for four funds, where we are reducing, I thought it would be a kind of better, you know?
So, I think the public, for transparency, the public needs to know how much, so we have this whole public process where we approve a budget at a maximum, and what, how much total was exceeded of the budget?
I mean, you can see that I don't know exact number, but it would be around $2 million if you add up like those eight or 10 funds where we have spent more.
Yeah, it would be good to add the total. So, staff exceeded by $2 million our approved expenditures, our budget.
But it was, again, I explained the reasons, right? You would see by each.
Yeah, so although you don't have anything for police, and for the last two years, you do give an explanation, that's missing here.
What's the?
The police pension fund, the about a half a million dollars difference, that's not explained here. I also have a question, if you could answer on page 303.
Page 303, yes.
It says, whereas a total budget increase of $2,460,691, and then in parentheses, it has a whole different number, which one are we supposed to look at here?
$2,460,000, okay, yeah. I mean, I'll check that, yeah, but it is, we can.
Yeah, I, you know, I feel like there's a lot, like that's a pretty serious mistake. Could we, I mean, I'd like, I'm concerned that there might be a lot more errors throughout this. Like I said, I see differences, just, you know, right from the beginning there, from that number. Again, the explanation for the police isn't in here, but it's in the last two years budget amendment. I would feel more comfortable, like that number needs clarification. I don't know which one we're looking at, if we could hold this to get these numbers looked at.
I mean, it's up to the city council, yeah. I mean, I can provide the number in next five minutes, what is the exact number?
And I would also prefer that this were brought back with the total amount of over expenditures that we're amending, as we've done in past years, and I think that is far more transparent. I think the public should know how much has been spent over the approved public budget that we all agreed to, and what our surplus is. I think those numbers are more, are far more transparent and important to the public than subtracting an amount in surplus, minus the amount that was overspent, which isn't even here, just the numbers listed. I think that would be preferred by the public to have those numbers.
So, yeah, I mean, again, it's, I don't know whether it's a legal issue, the finance and budget committee kind of approved with what we discussed here, that, okay, four funds would go down, the other would go up, as the individual numbers mentioned there. Yes, definitely, we can correct if, before the city council passes the exact number of the increase, but again, the overall number is correct.
Right, but we shouldn't be voting on incorrect number.
The overall number of 34 million is the correct number, that is the net effect in the budget, from 360 million. So, that's the kind of number we are using in the ordinance. But again, yes, I can provide the right number. Otherwise, I don't know whether I have to go back to the finance and budget committee and kind of then come back to the city council.
Let me just ask a procedural question. Was that, are you making a motion to hold?
I am.
So, Councilmember Kelly moves to hold this item. Is there a second to that motion? The motion fails for lack of a second.
So, we have incorrect numbers here that we're about to vote on. I just want to make that clear.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I'm sure those were, okay, I, I don't have any questions. I'll just reserve this. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Can you repeat that, sorry?
We couldn't hear your vote, Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the item is passed. It will be back on the agenda for action on May 8th. That concludes our consent agenda and brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, as was mentioned previously in committee, there will be a meeting Saturday, this Saturday, April 29th, at 5:00 PM regarding the proposed apartment hotel on Oak Street. The meeting will be at the property formerly known as the King Home. Thank you to the Halem family for hosting that meeting. Next ward meeting is Tuesday, May 2nd, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown. The focus on that meeting will be economic development. Unfortunately, we will not be joined by Annie Cokely of downtown Evanston, who is leaving our fair community to go work for our archerival in progressive suburbia Oak Park. So, I just want to express thanks and good wishes to Annie Cokely. And then, next on my list is office hours Saturday, May 13th, 10:00 to noon at Reprise Roasters on Main Street. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
No report.
Councilmember Saffredin?
No report.
Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
We have an eighth ward meeting this Thursday at, I believe, Palm House, certainly a virtual link, and so we're looking forward to eighth ward residents and residents across the city joining there. We'll have representatives from OK dispensaries and West Town Bakery, as well as, we'll have folks from the One Howard organization to talk about the Rice Grant. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Harris?
Our next ward meeting will be May 16th. More information to come.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, the next third ward office hours are Thursday, April 4th, from 7:30 to 9:30, no, excuse me, Thursday, May 4th, thank you, from 7:30 to 9:30 at Brothers K Coffee House. Thanks.
And now, Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding the purchase or use of real property and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C5 and C11.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves the city council convene into an executive session to discuss the aforementioned items. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll. Councilmember Newsma is recognized to amend his own motion.
At the request of the city manager, we are going to add an additional exception, which is.
C1 personnel.
Which is C1 personnel.
Second.